I'm just gonna call the meeting to order. And if we could pre, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
United States.
And to the republic. One nation under God. With liberty and justice for all.
Can we ask, Madam, for select woman, just, I want to make sure we are taping and broadcasting. I didn't hear whether we did turn on the tape or not.
Jerry, are we on?
You're on.
Oh, thank you, Dave. Thanks, Tom. Um, to consider an act upon the minutes of February 22nd, 2021, March 2nd, 2021, and March 8th, 2021, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I guess I have to second it.
Yes, you do.
Uh, any discussion?
Not by me.
Okay, all in favor? Motion carries. This is just for information only. Richard D'Amica has resigned from the Conservation Commission. His term expires 11/23. His resignation date was 11, I'm sorry, February 22nd, 2021. And I just want to thank Mr. D'Amica for serving in this role and Mr. McCain, who will, who I want to, will be, will be a layer on the agenda, appointing him, he was an alternate and he's going to be now filling this role.
Great. All right, thank, thank Mr. D'Amica for his service as well. Most appreciated.
Item number five is the appointment to the Golf Commission. For George Harrington, Mike, of Rolling Ridge Road, for the term of 4/21 to 4/26, to fill the vacancy for Paul Gleason, whose term expired, expires on 4/1/21, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Discussion, we've gotten a lot of excitement about this. Mr. Harrington is a very enthusiastic, soon to be member of the Golf Commission, and has a following who's emailed us, so.
I was thinking, I've, I've lived in Fairfield 47 years and I've played golf at both golf courses all my whole adult life. And about 30 years ago, my son wrote a letter to the Fairfield citizen, complaining about how the old geezers at the golf course abused the high school and college age kids down there. And I've kind of kept my eye on how the golf course was managed ever since. And I got to be president of the senior golf group 13 years ago. And I've probably been to just about every golf commission meeting since then. And including going back to when Craig Curley put together the first tenure plan for the golf course, which I think has had a lot to do with making that golf course every year better than the year before. So I look forward to continuing in that tradition of continuous improvement and fiscal responsibility. And we'll keep making this golf course a real valuable asset for the town of Fairfield. So thank you all for your vote.
Okay, Mr. Harrington, we were at your, at your appointment, so, and I, I believe your comments were picked up.
Okay, then I'm, I'm all set, I'm looking forward to it. I thank you very kindly for your confidence.
Thank you for your willingness to serve. The Golf Commission has done a great job over the last number of years. I echo your commentary regarding their tenure plan. And I think that's been noted by both the golfers as well as outsiders who've, who've recognized the upkeep of the golf course and the work that Mr. Grace and the management team, Mr. Calabrese, and, and your team have done, so, you know.
Very well managed.
Yeah, so it's a true town asset.
Well, I appreciate your, your willingness to serve, Mike, and I know that you're going to be very good at this and very engaged, so thank you for, for stepping up.
It's my pleasure, thank you.
If there's no other comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously, congratulations, Mike.
Thank you.
Best of luck.
Thank you.
Our next item is item number six, reappointment of the Golf Commission, Peter Seacrest. I believe Peter is on with us. He lives at Toilsom Hill Road and his term is from 4/21 to 4/26, so I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Uh, second. Is there, is Peter on?
I am, I am, thank you.
Nice to see you, I'm here for you, for you.
Yeah, how are you, thanks for, thanks for having me and thanks for approving. And I too look forward to continuing the work that we've been doing to keep improving Smith and the par three, we have a beautiful new clubhouse. New pro, there's a lot of excitement, a lot of energy, and I think we have a great spot there, as Mr. Flynn said. So I thank you and I look forward to, as I said, teaching the work going to make that incredibly great place for the town.
So, uh, thank you for your efforts to date and thank you for your willingness to continue to serve and for all you guys have done, and I, I wish you the best with the new clubhouse and the re-envisioned golf course up there, I'm, I'm excited to see what the next few years will bring.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Peter, for, for continuing your service, it's much appreciate, it's much, much appreciated on behalf of the town.
Thank you very much.
If there's no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, congratulations, Peter.
Thanks again.
And the next item is for information only. These are appointments to the Conservation Commission, we're solely under for select woman. A is Conservation Comember, Commission Member, Full Member, Brian McCann, who had served before as an alternate member and is now going to serve in a full member, replacing Richard D'Amica. And his term will go to 11/23. And I don't think Brian is on, we didn't ask him to be, so. Brian has a lot of land use experience, he works for the city of Norwalk. And so he's a, he's going to be a great, good member and he's looking forward to being a full member. And the next mem, item on the agenda is item B. And this is just again, a first select woman appointment. This is an RTM Special Legislative Management Committee, Committee on Committees Appointment. And I am appointing Amy Rigerio, District One, Green, Greenfield Hill Road, and her term will go to 11/21. And I appointed her officially on March 2nd, 2021. And this is due to the even split on the RTM, which the town attorney has made in a a determination that with a split, we have a, a change in this committee.
So I'd like to thank both individuals for their willingness to serve in their new positions and wish them the best of luck as we move forward.
All right. So our next item is item number eight. We do have a minutes being taken, so. Item number eight is purchasing authority, we have Gerald Foley and Anthony Calabrese to present. This is to hear and consider and authorize the purchasing authority to enter into the proposed two-year agreement with Golf Complete Incorporated, AKA FourUp, to provide a software solution for golf tee times and a refreshed website for a total amount not to exceed $17,220. Funding for this agreement is available in the Park and Recreation Trust Fund, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I second, go ahead, gentlemen.
Yes, hi, this is Gerald Foley, Director of Purchasing, the town of Fairfield. I just figured I'd give you a little overview, so the, the existing product that we were using, utilizing at the golf course was outdated. We were waiting for the new golf pro to come on board before we selected a new product. So what we did is had, we solicited quotes from four different companies. And of the companies that we solicited the quotes, we thought that the product that we're presenting tonight was the best, best fit for the, our golf course. Specifically, it was the ease of use of the product. The operating system was backed by a, a major company. The system was actually built by a golf pro. We have a dedicated customer service rep and then the design of the website was very good. Once, if, once the process is approved, we're hoping for an implementation time of approximately 30 days. So we're hoping to have the new product up and running on or about May 1st.
Thank you, a couple of questions, is there additional functionality in this software product that wasn't in our existing one?
I believe it's that there is, either Anthony or we have our, the golf pros on there, they could talk specifically to that. But my understanding is, is the old product was not very good. And just like I said, was outdated, it was hard to use. But they can probably talk in terms of the more, the overall benefits of them.
Please.
Yep, Anthony Calabrese, Director of Parks and Recreation. To, to put it pretty gently, our current software is pretty clunky when it comes to making a tee time. A lot of steps involved, you can't cancel the tee time, the new version of the software, the new company will allow you to do that. You won't have to go through the entire process to find out that a tee time's not available. That seems to be one of the biggest issues we have right now, is everybody's trying to get that 7:00 AM tee time. You know, Tom, you and I might click on it at the same time, go through the process, you're quicker than I am. By the time I hit submit, it tells me, oh, man, not available, and now 10:30 is the next time I can get. So everything's real time in this, it's, there's a slight delay in the current software we're using.
And how much, Anthony, is, is there in the trust fund at this point in time, approximately?
Approximately a million dollars. Most of that will be spent for our summer programming, summer camps, things of that nature, but we're, we can cover this and we're, this is only, I think, a $5,000 increase year, over the year of what we spend on the current software. So it's not a huge increase.
Is this, is there an ongoing fee on this, is this 17, one time, and then there's an ongoing for that?
17, it, it's a monthly fee, that 17 covers the 24-month contract, so it's a two-year contract that would be signed.
Got it, so this is two-year, okay, fair enough. And, Mr. Baldwin, did this go through all the normal channels that we should go through and, Mr. Foley, and do we have any legal issues with this contract?
The answer is, this is Tim Baldwin, it did. And it's a fairly standard, straightforward, software agreement, licensing agreement, so there are no issues. My end, I believe that it was also, it did go out to bid, right?
Yes, we, what we did is we solicited quotes for it. So what we did is we tried a few times, I think we did twice to go out, and we only got one company to participate. So the company was called Golf Now, which was extremely expensive product. So we went out and we, we did it independently, went and got now soliciting quotes, we got four companies to participate. But back to your question about the cost, it's, it's $680 a month, $680 a month. And then there's a one-time cost of setting up the websites, which was four, it's 450, what, what, you're setting up each of the courses. So it's 450 for one course and 450 for the other, so it's.
And they're included in this.
Yes.
Yes, yeah, thank you for that, that's, that's, thank you for the clarification. And was this approved or recommended by the Golf Commission, or who did the legwork on this?
Yes, Golf Commission did approve it.
Okay.
This Gerald Foley, yes.
Okay. Fair enough, I have no more questions.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
You're welcome.
Obviously, I, I've read through this before, so I don't have any questions either. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. The next item, thank you, Anthony, thank you, Gerald.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The next item, Gerald, you're still on.
I'm still on.
Item number nine, to hear and consider and authorize the purchasing authority to enter into the proposed contract with PAC Group LLC Torrington, Connecticut, to provide all labor equipment and all else necessary to perform the tenant fit-out and renovation regarding the construction of the new emergency communication center at Sacred Heart University as detailed in bid 2021-28, for a total amount not to exceed $1,371,585, with additional authority to execute change orders to said contract in an amount not to exceed $137,159, combined total amount not to exceed $1,508,744. Funding for this contract is available, and then there's an account number listed in the agenda, subject to approval by the RTM, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
On second, and I will open it up, we have Chief Kalamars on the line, Captain Bukarati, and Mr. Foley. Who would like to start off?
I can start if no one has objection, this is Gerald Foley, Director of Purchasing. So we went out for bid back in, we released the package in September, September 23rd. We had six companies that actually submitted bid submissions. So the, our low bidder was a company called PAC Group out of Torrington, Connecticut. They submitted a low bid, we had scope reviews with the PAC Group and the next low bidder, which is a company called RFJ Associates out of Trumbull. PAC was the low bidder, at the end of our scope review meeting, they, everyone was in consensus that that was the correct firm to go with. We went and we contacted PAC's references, and it just so happens that one of them was Sacred Heart University. And when we contacted them, they told us that they were one of their premier companies and that they did excellent work, on time, on budget. So that made us all feel extra, extra special in terms of that they actually bid on this project and they actually were the low bidder. So now we, what happened was is we went out to bid, we asked all the bidders to hold their pricing for 90 days. When we went through and we crunched all the numbers, it appeared that this particular account was going to be a little short in terms of the potential funding. So we're going through, we went through Board of Selectmen, through Board of Finance, and now finally we're going on to the RTM to seek some additional funding. So the result of all that is, is the project kickoff has been slightly delayed. In the midst of that, the bids that we had out there, it actually expired. So the number that you have in the, the package tonight is actually a revised number. And so the revised number is up approximately 13,500 over what the company originally had bid. And we went through them, we vetted it, and we felt that the, the amount that they're presenting was, was reasonable, given the, that it's now been since, actually since bidding is almost like, almost six months. So the items that went up slightly were doors and frames, drywall, acoustic ceilings, glassing and glazing. But all in all, we're still of the impression that that's the right firm to go with, the PAC Group for this project. When we put the project out to bid too, it has a 120-day timeline. So once the contract is executed, it'll take approximately 120 days from when the company starts to when the, the, the building is complete or the, the ECC is complete. So we're thinking in terms of timing wise, that on or about September 1st, the project will be completed.
So if I might, the delay of six months or whatever cost us about 13 or $14,000?
Yes, yeah, it's like 13,5.
And was that all material costs or did they jam up labor costs?
It was a little, little labor and, and more so materials, so you had, you had doors, doors, the doors, frames.
Yeah, you mentioned.
Yeah, and glassing and glazing, I think that's, go ahead.
So why did it, what, I guess, did we change something between the original bid that made it go up, or what's the?
No, it's, it's what happened was is the, when we went out, we went out to bid and when the bids came in, the, and then between that point and the latter time, it was just a delay. So I think from the time the bids actually come in till now, we're almost, I think we're almost again 90 days. So they, so we were bidding basically last year's numbers and we, we went out to bid, you know, in the October timeline, actually before October. So when they, so if we had awarded it when we, you know, going out, that, that, the number would have been that 13,5 less than the number you're, you're seeing this evening.
Yeah, no, that's how I got that part, I was trying to figure out what's driving the cost up. We didn't change scope, it's material costs.
And labor costs.
And why would labor costs go up? Is it, is it rate?
Yeah, it was the rate, so they went from, because we were bidding initially under calendar year 2020 and now we have, we're calendar year 2021.
Understood.
And I don't think it's, yeah.
Okay, what about, let me ask another question to, I think to the CFO. Is this, are these numbers all in the resolutions that we had put forth previously, so we, there's no additional funding, we don't have issues here with financing this?
That's correct, all those are in, are within the budget, within the resolution that was passed two, three weeks ago and that's going to go before the RTM.
Let me ask you a question, what was that resolution, refresh my memory, what the, what the number is versus the 1.5 that's in here?
What the, so the resolution, the resolution was for the, the whole amount of the capital project, not just, not just for this renovation amount.
Right, but this is the part that was in the resolution, I'm sorry, related to this, this is within that estimate?
Yes, yep.
Okay, and it'll last for some contingency as well?
It does, it's a 10% contingency.
Got it, and Mr. Baldwin, the contract for this work, A, it sounds like it went through the appropriate process for the bidding and the leveling of the bids and that, but B, do you have any issues with the contract on this one?
There are no issues, from my perspective.
Thank you, I appreciate the information. I'm all set.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foley.
Welcome, Mr. Flynn, thank you.
Okay. There's no other questions, I will call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Bye-bye now.
Hi. See you, chief.
Take care.
Okay, next, item number 10. The town attorney will present this item, this is to hear and consider and act upon the First Amendment to the lease, the amendment by and between Sacred Heart University Incorporated, the Lesser, the Town of Fairfield and the Town of Westport collectively, the leaseee for office space on the first floor of the East Building of the Lesser's property at 5151 Park Avenue, Fairfield, Connecticut, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Attorney Baldwin?
Yes, thank you, I won't take much of your time here, this is a necessary amendment to the term of the lease based on guidance from Bond Counsel Attorney Staffstrum, who was not aware that the original lease term, which was for 12 and a half years, was an option to renew it for another 12 and a half years by the towns of Westport and Fairfield, that in order to be consistent with the 20-year bond resolution, we would need to extend the term. So we did that just for the straightforward 25-year term lease rather than the two 12 and a half year terms. And this has been conceptually approved already by both the Town of Westport's Council and also Sacred Heart University's Council.
What does conceptually approved mean, Mr. Baldwin?
It means that they have reviewed the language and they are in agreement with it, and then it needs to go before maybe the, their leadership or their, their respective bodies for actual signature.
But they don't anticipate any issues and the only change from this and the original agreement is the term?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I'm good, Madam, for select woman.
Thank you, obviously no further questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Attorney Baldwin. Item number 11, to consider and act upon tax refunds as recommended by the tax collector in the amount of $80,156.16. Motion to approve.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And then I'm just going to do a quick COVID update. The Town of Fairfield has reached 4,276 cases to date. And as of last Friday, the Fairfield Health Department administered 12,870 vaccines to those eligible, and the department has an additional 3,548 appointments, excuse me, scheduled over the next four weeks. We are proud to say that not one vaccine has been wasted or unused since the Health Department opened their clinic in January. Just to remind our residents, it wasn't the newsletter, but eligible residents for COVID now, healthcare professional personnel, medical first responders, long-term care facility residents, residents and staff of select congregate settings, individuals 55 or older, I'm part of that group. And I got my first shot last week at Sacred Heart's Vaccine Clinic. Educator staff in pre-K, 12, and childcare providers. The Fairfield Health Department has already provided 1,800 vaccination appointments to education and childcare staff with over 1,050 receiving their first dose last week. Um, since the newsletter came out on Friday, Governor Lamont announced today an accelerated schedule to provide COVID vaccines to Connecticut residents as quickly and equitably as possible. So this is a bit different, he, on March 19th, scheduling opens to all individuals aged 45 to 54. That date had been March 22nd, so that's a moving up date, and April 5th is tentative date. The scheduling for individuals between 16 and 44 are going to be allowed. And on April 12th for ages 35 to 44, and May 3rd for ages 16 to 34. The state will work with providers and the Department of Developmental Services to accelerate access to those most medically high-risk individuals under 40, under 45 during the month of April. And I do want to again acknowledge that Sacred Heart has partnered with St. Vincent's Hartford Health to open up a clinic at the West Campus at Sacred Heart University. And that's just huge, huge boost for not just Fairfield, but also for our entire state. Because the more shots that get into arms, the safer we'll all be in, in a more productive way. So I was really excited to be there for their grand opening last week and to get my first shot. So I'm looking forward to getting my second, and I'm, I'm excited that the governor's announcing that there's going to be addition, you know, they're going to move up that timeline because people are really anxious and want to get their shot. And I think that might be it for me, a shot that wave an update.
So, Brennell, just comment that even though I am not eligible for the shot yet, I just wanted to point that out.
Of course you did.
There is a, I, I've heard a lot of commentary from the public about how easy the administration has made it, the Health Department has made it to get their shots. In fact, just before this call, one of our colleagues who was on the call mentioned that, so kudos for all those making that happen. As well as thank you to Sacred Heart for doing what they're doing, I, I couldn't agree more with your comments. And I do look forward to the time when I'll be eligible to get my shots, so.
Well, it's, it's coming up soon, you young whippersnapper.
Exactly.
But I, I just want to also note for our residents that, um, you know, I'm, I'm just so incredibly proud of our Health Department. They have worked so incredibly hard over the last year. And I was down there again last week just checking in with them and they're just working around the clock, people, I just want to remind our residents that they're still doing contact tracing, they're still assisting people with questions, assisting with appointments, Sands is tracking down vaccines to be able to put the clinics up, and he's there every single day, and they've had, they had a vaccine clinic just this past Saturday. So they are working weekends, they're working nights, they're working every day. And so we really owe a huge, huge debt of gratitude to our entire Health Department. And when this is all over, we need to do something really special for all of them.
Thank you.
All right, well, if there's no further comment or questions, I will ask for a motion, oh, wait a minute, we're going into executive session, so I'm going to say a motion to go into. We're going into executive session, so I'm gonna say a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
And um, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so Dave, you're gonna uh, take us off and then I will uh, text them when we're out of executive session.
We're back on. There we go. Make a motion that we come out of exec, ex, private executive session.
Yep. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the recommendation of the Town Attorney and Special Counsel in the matter of the Town of Fairfield versus uh, One Commerce Drive.
Second.
Call them.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Take care, everybody. Have a good rest of your evening.
Good night, everyone.
Have a good week.
You too.
Bye bye.
Good night, Prue. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
Thanks.